What's the word, the other side?
Uh, were you at the actual...
I was not.
Oh, okay.
I was here.
We had been doing a lot of that, that...
Right.
It is seven o'clock, we do have a forum, I'll call the workshop, I mean, excuse me, the council meeting to order.
First item on the agenda is the invocation given by Mayor Pro Tim Durham and then the pledges both American and Texas flags led by myself.
If you had joined me in a moment of silence.
Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I pledge allegiance to the flag, I pledge allegiance to the Constitution, Texas, one nation under God, one and indivisible.
It is seven o'clock, we do have a forum, I'll call the workshop, I mean, excuse me, the council meeting to order. First item on the agenda is the invocation given by Mayor Pro Tim Durham and then the pledges both American and Texas flags led by myself.
If you had joined me in a moment of silence.
Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I pledge allegiance to the flag, I pledge allegiance to the Constitution, Texas, one nation under God, one and indivisible.
It is seven o'clock, we do have a forum, I'll call the workshop, I mean, excuse me, the council meeting to order. First item on the agenda is the invocation given by Mayor Pro Tim Durham and then the pledges both American and Texas flags led by myself.
If you had joined me in a moment of silence.
Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag, I pledge allegiance to the Constitution, Texas, one nation under God, one and indivisible. Counselman Gilmore, would you...
No, we're not.
Would you like to join me down at the podium, please, sir?
Thank you, Mayor.
So, everything before that?
Once again tonight, we're here to make a special presentation to some of our outstanding youth in our community and these are actually students from Lewisville High School. And we try to do that as often as we can, we ask the high school to give us some of the young people and bring us some of the qualifications that they've made and their achievements and what they've done so we like to recognize them and let our citizens know what a wonderful young youth that we have in our community which is our future. And with that, I'm gonna kinda turn it over to, excuse me, Councilman Gilmore who noticed this and brought it to our attention and actually requested this to be put on the agenda tonight.
So, I have three children who are in the LHS theater pattern, my daughter's in middle school and my two boys are just finishing elementary school. And so I get a lot of newsletters and information coming from the theater pattern and I'm always interested in seeing what our fighting farmers are up to. So, Ms. Squibb actually happens to be on one of my Facebook feeds and I saw that her team not only got first, they got first and second and they got first, second and third. And I was flabbergasted, I was floored and I was really appreciative that we got great information about a group of kids that weren't just in the sports. Sports is fun, sports is important, but speech, debate, all of those thinking skills, I love to see kids be successful at those. So I was really, really excited to see that not only were they winning like that, and this was repeated, six years? Twelve years, thank you. So, they've won this twelve years in a row, so this is something that really our fighting farmers do very, very well, so we wanted to make sure to recognize y'all, so I appreciate you putting that on Facebook.
Thank you, Councilman, if you will stand there with it, because what I'd like to do is ask you to come forward, is a call your name and then we'll get an individual picture and then we'll get a group, if you will stand up here and we'll get a group picture. Okay, if I could, have Maritza Lamone, if you please come forward. I hope I pronounced that correctly. Congratulations, it's a pleasure to speak to you.
Thank you.
Maritza actually won third place and this is for, we're here, we recognize and honor for outstanding achievements as a Lewisville Independent School District in the Polling Event category, Lions Club District 2E2 Drug Awareness Speech Contest, third place. We need to move over this way.
No inappropriate. No one being recognized for outstanding achievements, Lewisville School District, Lions Club District 2E2 Drug Awareness Speech Contest, second place. And now, if I could add, Carol Desai. Carol Desai is being recognized and honored for outstanding achievement, Lewisville Independent High School student, Lewisville Lions Club District 2E2 Drug Awareness Speech Contest, first place. If we can get all of you here at one time, we'll see the photo. We have a special presentation by you tonight, that Brett, Brett's going to be privileged to hear the speeches that she presented at one, third place. Get all of you.
You certainly can.
Can she use that microphone, right there?
Oh, yes. And I don't think it'll pick up.
I'm gonna have to hold the button for her.
I want to start off by thanking, I want to start off by thanking all the people that are here tonight and for their time and all the people who are very privileged to be here and I want to thank my friends who have worked as well, to know I'm here beside and trying to help my students and all my employees and I go through hard stuff every, nobody is afraid of me and I'm really, I'm really excited about this. Speed equals distance divided by time, as the physics equation goes, so how fast can your life come to an end because of drinking? Real fast if you're a teenager and your life is consumed by alcohol. Nowadays, teenagers are so draft, so, sorry about that. Today, teenagers believe that alcohol is such a wonderful thing and they stole the term, you only live once. YOLO because they think that those words are set in stone and do they suggest drinking out of illegal age? Drinking and driving, drinking and jumping off of buildings because they think that they can fly. So, can we find a foolproof successful way for teenagers to stop abusing alcohol? Scientists have seen that the brain does not stop developing until as small as you can be. And scientists have also seen that during the brain's development, children go to developmental stages and one of the stages is risk-taking. Teenagers always find a foolproof successful way to accomplish their real dream and goal and millions do it through the use of alcohol. Nowadays, society plays a major role in a teenager's life as the choices he or she makes. Using and television advertising endorses alcohol in such a way that it brainwashes and hypnotizes teenagers into thinking that alcohol is a wonderful thing. Award-winning singer and songwriter Katie Perry sings her favorite song last Friday night about going through a blackout blur and how it ruled. The blackout blur that she sings about is caused by binge-drinking alcohol, which you can clearly see throughout the music video. Teenagers binge-drink to such an extent that it totally brainwashes them and piss, and they totally black out. Binge-drinking not only causes blackouts, but according to email.com, it causes 1,300 deaths each and every year, making it certainly a cause of death amongst teenagers. Teenagers believe in a stolen term, you only live once. YOLO because they think that those words are set in stone and do they suggest drinking out of illegal age? Drinking and driving, drinking and jumping off of buildings because they think that they can fly. And we have Robert Drake to thank for this persuasive advice. I know that death can be a result for teenagers who abuse alcohol, but what happens to those teens who do overcome enough to grow their life that has to do with alcohol? Their life completely changes, they stumble upon the path of rehabilitation and try to fix themselves for the better. Today, teenagers are going through medical disasters such as liver cirrhosis, cirrhosis of the liver is the start of the liver and poor liver function. It is finally safe to find liver. Teenagers don't realize that all of the things people away, they should stop consuming alcohol. But if alcohol consumption continues, the only way of surviving is liver transplant. According to the National Institute of Alcoholics and Alcoholology, overdrinking can cause brain damage known as toxic intoxication. Toxic intoxication can cause changes in sleep habits, personality, severe psychiatric conditions, anxiety and depression. Positive effects suggest short attention span and positive coordination, which I've heard that's probably what's causing the mental breakdown. And today, teenagers go through both of these medical disasters and some are the cause for suicidal. I know lots of parents here today and I want you to take a good scene in your head that your precious child will not wake up next morning because he or she drowned in alcohol. I don't want any parent to go through these feelings, yet five and 10,000 of them go through the same exact feeling each and every year. Stop is denied, parents teach your children about the dangers of alcohol. If you're an alcohol user, stop now. We need to do more than just talking, we need to stand against minors and alcohol. Speed equals distance divided by time, time that is running short, time that teenagers are wasting away on alcohol. Whatever the distance may be, the speed of death will be arriving quickly unless we ask the community to stand against minors and alcohol. Thank you.
Thank you. We thank you very much and we congratulate each one of you. It's a pleasure each year, I've been able to hear several of you over the years, some of your predecessors over the years do speaking of the four-way test at our Rotary Clubs and y'all do wonderful jobs. And so we actually gonna, I believe, have ours this week, this Wednesday, they will be there doing our four-way test presentations, but it's just amazing to see how well these LHS does in contests, not only in this district, but also nationally. And it's great to see the achievements that they've done, we thank you for the program that you do at LHS, we're very proud of all of you and thank you very much.
Thank you. See you Wednesday.
Yes, ma'am, we'll see you Wednesday. Next item is the visitor citizens forum, at this time, any person with business before the council not scheduled on the agenda may speak to the council, no formal action can be taken on these items at this meeting. I did have one card filled out, Terry Broome, if you'd come forward. Terry, if you'd just give your name and address for the record, please.
I'll try and get through this without being too emotional.
You'll do.
Mayor, city manager, council, staff and citizens, I wanted to come tonight and give my sincere gratitude to the fire department and your dispatchers. It's kinda one thing when you're on the same side, but when you become a public, you know, private citizen and need somebody's help, it's a whole different world. Last, you know, people know me, I'd like to talk, so I'll give you a Paul Harvey side of this. Last Thursday evening, when I was waiting for my wife to come home from work and take her out to, for Valentine's Day, I was talking to a very dear friend of mine in Waco on the phone, just, thank God, was a paramedic. About 6:45, while we were talking, I started having some issues and the gentleman's name is Gary and Gary started talking to me. It didn't take long to realize that I was in serious problems with some stuttering and speech problems and so Gary basically told me if I didn't hang up the phone and call the dispatch and the ambulance, that he was gonna hang up and he lives in Waco. And I talked to him a couple more minutes and then when he started asking me my address, I said, Gary, I know where you're going, I'm hanging up the phone. I hung up the phone, got in my office, walked around the front door unlocked and opened it up and unlocked the glass door and called dispatch, 911. And the young lady on the end, which I wanted to find out her name and thank her personally, kept me talking, kept me very alert as I could be because I was stuttering and stumbling worse than I am now. Till the guys from station one arrived, they were able to check me over. I did tell one of them that when they hooked me up to the wires, I said, you're gonna show me that I'm having a heart attack, I'm not having a heart attack, that's another issue. After about six, seven minutes, they started talking, it's time to lull you up and go. I said, my wife was about three or four minutes out, they allowed her to get there, they followed us to the house, emergency room and walked in and told the emergency person on duty that I was having a stroke. They were able to work with me very well, luckily. The stroke only affected some of my speech, which I told the therapist, God, I've been speaking this way for 58 years, so if that's as bad as it gets. I came out very, very lucky, no paralysis on my left or right side or vision or anything, it's just a little bit of a speech problem and I can live through that. But I did wanna come tonight and thank Tim Tittles people and your dispatch and what, I wanna find out what our name is and thank them because after doing this for about 30 years, I've worked on a lot of people that were 10 times worse than what I've been able to get through. But I do wanna thank the council for allowing me to speak tonight, thank Tim and his group, if I'll leave, I'm gonna be a total wreck, but I do thank you, Councilman.
Well, Terry, before you step down, we wanna thank you for all your years of service and while many of us recognize you and know the service that you've given to the community here, I'd like you, you referenced it a little bit in your talk there, but I'd like for everyone else to know the service that you give in this community and what you're referring to in that. Tell us what you've been doing for the last 30 years here in this community.
Thank you, I'll be around, but I won't be...
You've been in the Lewisville Fire Department here for the last 30 years.
They're brothers and they're always big brothers, but sometimes y'all hear a lot of bad stuff and I think it's good that y'all hear some good stuff that they did. And they performed fantastically and the young lady that was dispatching performed excellent because she kept me talking and I think that's the main reason why I don't have any more paralysis or problems than I do now. But I do appreciate you for allowing me to speak tonight, sir.
Well, we thank you for coming and I want you to know that everybody I've always heard talk about, you have said nothing, but like you're just a big brother to them, so thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
We truly do have a lot of tremendous team members here to make up this city, both on our fire department side, our police side, our water and our sewer and our streets and all the management team. And we really do appreciate it because I know, living here since 1972 and actually in the city limits since '83, I've had several experiences myself, as you, with my family members here in town, my wife, my mother, and everyone has always responded tremendously and we greatly appreciate all the work that all of you do because it is a team effort here in our city. Next item is the consent agenda, all the following items on the consent agenda are considered to be self-explanatory by the council and will be enacted with one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member or citizen still requests, for a citizen to request removal of an item, a speaker card must be filled out and submitted to the city secretary. Councilman Gilmore?
Move to approve the consent agenda as written.
Second. We have a motion by Councilman Gilmore to approve the consent agenda as presented and a second by Councilman Vaughn, all in favor? Aye. Opposed, motion carries. Item four is regular here in consideration of a variance to Lewisville City Code Session 6-98, fire protection regarding paved parking on existing water line easement related to the proposed Dairy Queen at 825 West Main Street as requested by Brian Umberger, P.E., Texas Development Services on behalf of the developer. The subject site is a 0.847 acre lot zone general business within the Valley Ridge Business Park West subdivision. Dairy Queen is leasing the property from Walmart Real Estate Business Trust and is in the process of permitting a new restaurant. Staff has reviewed and approved the engineering site plan for Dairy Queen subject to the city council approval of the variance regarding construction of a paved parking area on an existing water line easement. Recommendation is that council approve the variance as set forth in the above caption. Councilman Guerina?
Move to approve as presented.
We have a motion by Councilman Guerina to approve as presented.
Mayor.
We have a second by Councilman Durham, yes, is there any discussion?
Yes, sir. I'd like to modify that motion, let me read my recommended motion. A move to approve the variance as set forth in the caption above contingent on the property owner reimbursing the city for the additional paving costs on the owner's property that it incurs resulting from the maintenance, repair or replacement of the city's water line.
Mayor, I'd like to modify my motion to reflect Councilman Ferguson's recommendation.
And a second. Okay, so we have a amended motion and second, any further discussion? Do you have anything else?
No, sir, that's it.
Councilman Vaughn, do you have anything else?
No, sir, he pretty well covered.
Same thing you were looking at?
Yes, sir, I just wanted to have the property owner have some responsibility if we had to deal with this water line in the future, that it wouldn't be borne totally by the taxpayers.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second, any more discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed, motion carries. Okay, that brings us to reports, Mika, Bob. Chief, you gotta be beaming from ear to ear hearing that testimony by one of your own.
I'm just glad to see Terry's doing well.
Isn't that the truth, God bless him. Linda, she's Curbo.
Yes, sir.
How are we doing? We're supposed to get some good rain tomorrow.
Yeah, we still need a lot, a lot of rain and getting a little bit of rain each week is helping, at least helping from losing more water, so we're hoping, this projection is that we may have a little bit more rain this spring than we thought at first, but...
Well, Carol, you're our ray of hope on all this, you're very important to us, as you well know. Dana, Brenda. Thank you. Councilman Durham?
Nothing, Mayor.
Councilman Guerina, excuse me.
Nothing, Mayor.
Councilman Gilmore?
Folks, if you have a second, hop on the city website, you'll find at the bottom center a way to apply for this year's Citizens' Fire Academy and if it's mostly as good as the Police Fire Academy, I know there's a little bit of, you know, a little bit of rivalry. I think it'll be pretty outstanding and in fact, I'm gonna be participating myself, so I expect that bar to be raised pretty high, but chief, I'm looking forward to it and I hope we have plenty of resident turnout to participate.
Mr. King?
No, sir.
Councilman first.
Yes, sir, a couple of different categories, first of all, I wanna make sure everybody's aware they can go to the city's website and fill out an application to be a part of the 2025 Planning Committee. That's a very important opportunity to have input and guidance into the future of our city and would encourage anyone who has a sincere interest to consider volunteering to be involved in that. Secondly, I'm kinda finally back in the saddle, it took a little longer than I thought it would, but that means that I actually can do the MCL report tonight for a change, so that's your clue that I'm back in the saddle. February 15th and 16th, oh, that's already passed, forget that, I'm not back in the saddle.
A little bit shaky now.
Slap me. February 22nd, Lewisville Lake Symphony, I oughta know this one, has their young artist competition, that's the Friday night, this coming Friday only, they don't do that concert on Friday and Sunday. The Flower Mountain JC's on the 23rd has a children's magic show, I believe that's a fundraiser. YHTC Murder Mystery Dinner Theater has a show in the Black Box on that same date. The Lewisville Civic Corral also has a show that evening entitled Let Beauty Awake, that will not be at the MCL Grand, that's at Episcopal Church of the Enunciation, but since they're one of our arts groups, I'll point that out.
I just wanted to have the property owner have some responsibility if we had to deal with this water line in the future, that it wouldn't be borne totally by the taxpayers.
Okay. Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, that brings us to reports. Nika, Bob. Chief, you gotta be beaming from ear to ear hearing that testimony by one of your own.
I'm just glad to see Terry's doing well.
Isn't that the truth? God bless him. Linda, she's curbo.
Yes, sir.
How are we doing? We're supposed to get some good rain tomorrow.
Yeah, we still need a lot, a lot of rain, and getting a little bit of rain each week is helping, at least helping from losing more water, so we're hoping this, projection is that we may have a little bit more rain this spring than we thought at first.
Well, Carol, you're our ray of hope on all this, so we, you're very important to us, as you well know. Dana. Brenda.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Durham?
Nothing, Mayor.
Councilman Guerina, excuse me.
Nothing, Mayor.
Councilman Gilmore?
Folks, if you have a second, hop on the city website, you'll find at the bottom center a way to apply for this year's Citizens' Fire Academy, and if it's mostly as good as the police fire academy, I know there's a little bit of, you know, a little bit of rivalry, I think it'll be pretty outstanding, and in fact, I'm gonna be participating myself, so I, I expect that bar to be raised pretty high. But Chief, I'm looking forward to it, and I hope we have plenty of resident turnout to participate.
Mr. King?
No, sir.
Councilman Ferguson?
Yes, sir. Couple of different categories. First of all, I wanna make sure everybody's aware they can go to the city's website and fill out an application to be a part of the 2025 Planning Committee. That's a very important opportunity to have input and guidance into the future of our city, and would encourage anyone who has a sincere interest to consider volunteering to be involved in that. Secondly, I'm kinda finally back in the saddle. I, it took a little longer than I thought it would, but that means that I actually can do the MCL report tonight for a change, so, so that's your clue that I'm back in the saddle. February fifteenth and sixteenth, oh, that's already passed, forget that, I'm not back in the saddle.
A little bit shaky now.
Slap me. February twenty-second, Lewisville Lake Symphony, I oughta know this one, has their young artist competition, that's the Friday night, this coming Friday only, they don't do that concert on Friday and Sunday. The Flower Mountain JC's on the twenty-third has a Children's Magic Show, I believe that's a fundraiser. YHTC Murder Mystery Dinner Theater has a show in the Black Box on that same date. The Lewisville Civic Corral also has a show that evening entitled "Let Beauty Awake." That will not be at the MCL Grand, that's at Episcopal Church of the Enunciation, but since they're one of our arts groups, I'll point that out. We have a jazz concert on the twenty-fourth by Boy Katindig, I believe is how you say it, that's at the MCL Grand, and I believe that's also a fundraiser. And then State of the Cities Luncheon coming up at the Lewisville Convention Center on the twenty-sixth, and that's it. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Councilman Vaughn?
Mayor, just one item. You and Councilman Gilmore talked about the LISD, and I just had one item. I'd like to also congratulate LISD for their participation in the HEB Excellence in Education Program. They finished as one of the five finalists, and as a result, received a $5,000 grant from HEB. And I don't know what the result of the competition is, but against the other five participants, if they were to win, their program would receive $100,000.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Wish you luck. Counselor? Julie? Officer, we certainly appreciate you being here again tonight, and we appreciate everything you do for us, sir.
You're welcome.
And Terry, we really do appreciate you taking your time out to come forward and thank your fellow team members, and it's well deserved, but we thank you very much for doing that, taking your time to do that. And Cleveland, we wanna thank you for filling in for us tonight, and give everyone our best wishes. Thank you, sir. And I did wanna mention that we had an excellent retreat, it was actually finished up two weekends ago. We had a great Thursday, a great Friday, and a pretty good Saturday. The reason I say pretty good Saturday, it was going great, we had a couple talks, and we didn't get out of there until six o'clock on Saturday night, the latest I've ever been on a Saturday at a retreat, but it was a good retreat. Certainly wanna thank our council for all the work and hours that you put into it, and wanna thank the staff for all the preparation that you did and all the people that worked on that. With that, in accordance with Texas Government Code Subchapter D, Section 551.071, legal issues related to Camelot landfill consultation with attorney, Section 551.071, consultation with attorney pending litigation, City of Lewisville versus Page Sutherland, Page LP and PSP Architects Engineers, Inc., case number 2012-30864-211, 211th Judicial District of Denton County, Texas, and Section 551.072, real estate property acquisition, and Section 551.087, economic development deliberation regarding economic development negotiation will now convene in closed session.